All right, Carl, Amanda. Amanda's up. Thank you. Tonight we have a public hearing for the 2025 preliminary budget of October 15, 2024, and that's right now at 7:00. And then after that, we're going to have our first meeting of the month, again, right here on October 15 at 7:00 p.m. But first, we're going to rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the God in every state of America, to the Republic of course of saints, one nation, and God, and to the visible, the living, and the just as for all.
Tonight, let's have a moment of silence for all our fellow citizens in Florida, North Carolina, and Georgia, who lost their lives tragically in the storms that passed through their state in the past two weeks. Thank you. Okay, so this is the time of the meeting. We're having a public hearing on the preliminary budget. The tentative budget was delivered to the clerk at our previous meeting, and now we have our preliminary budget, which is technically the same as the tentative budget. And we're just finishing up the final budget. It'll be coming out next meeting. So does anybody in the public have any comments on the preliminary budget? James, come on up, please.
James Garofalo, I'm here as a resident and a senior, and I'd like to say a couple of things. One is, you know, the documents, I have always felt are rather dry, just a bunch of numbers. And I know it's required that you have to do that, but I always thought that it would be a good idea to do more than that. And I think some of the things that, say, the police department does, providing you with some year-to-date data, both for this year and the previous year, and then at the end of the year, you actually have data for the entire year. But to go beyond that for all of the departments, where you could pick out specific information to provide on that kind of a basis, and then over the years, you could actually track the information, and you might have like five years of, this is how many accidents we had in the town, and this is where certain things are going or not going. So I think that communicating these things to the public can be a good, a very good thing to make them understand why you're spending money. And I'll give you another example, something like the transfer station, where you had a committee, and we talked about a lot of things, and one of the things that was done was a short study was done when people arrive at the transfer station. And as a result of that, the hours for the transfer station were cut.
Yep.
And that reduced the cost of the personnel there. It doesn't necessarily reduce the cost of hauling out the recyclables and garbage. But to be able to link some of that data with the permits, which are required, gathered on a monthly basis and punches, but also to interact with, this is what the Ulster County Resource Recovery is charging us from year to year.
Yep.
So you can justify, look, they bumped us up 10%. We have to think about bumping up those prices 10%, but to be able to justify those kinds of things. But also, at the end of the year, before you sit down and do your schedule, you now have much better data, and the public would have much better information on all of the areas of government, and understand why you're buying a new police car this year, but not next year, and why you, the highway department needs a new truck to be able to show that information. Actually,
Yep.
When I was in New Hampshire, many, many years ago, the past century, I went to one of their meetings, and they actually had line items for things like that.
Yep.
And the people stood there, and they voted then and there whether to add them into the budget or not.
Yeah.
And you can't do that, and, you know, I wouldn't expect you to do that in this, in this town.
I think what you're asking for is kind of like, we have worksheets that we work off of, and that breaks down the budget a little more in depth. It's kind of seems like what you're looking for is like, with those lines, when you just see the bullet line, right? It might be whatever, it might $250,000 for personnel or equipment or whatever. What is it actually for, right?
But not, not only that, but to look at that over multiple years.
Oh, yeah.
So that you can see some graphs and see how things are
Yeah, we have the data.
Are actually changing.
You know, we have, our budget goes in an Excel sheet, basically how it comes out.
Yeah.
And we have, go back almost 10 years, that Excel sheet is the same one we work off of. So we have all the historical data, and now with our new program, it actually can tell you what from one year to the next, and from that, could you go back five years if you want?
And you have budgets, okay, but what was actually spent?
No, it'll tell you.
And usually, it's pretty close to the budget.
Yeah, it's close.
And, you know, some of the things, I think, would just make government more open and visible, and people appreciate what is being done. How many miles of highway were actually paved in one year as opposed to another? These are the things that I think would add credence that you're, that you're doing things and
I will take that into consideration for the next budget, James.
Yeah, but some of that is already public knowledge. I mean, the highway department tells you in their monthly reports, we have done so many miles this, this summer. If you follow along, along the year, you will see already what they have done this year and what they have done previous year.
But what you're not, you are collecting the information on a month-by-month basis, but what you're not doing is putting it all together so one person can see, like they do with the police department. Here we are, year-to-date, how many accidents have occurred in the town. This is what happened last year. You can't see that information easy. You have to go and dig through every single month. And if you want to look at multiple years
So what do you want, like a dashboard of graphic of what it is to give you a snapshot of from year to year and to all that?
Well, we have a rolling sheet of, like our budget sheets, we have a rolling sheet that would go from month to month, and it tells you what we spent compared to budget.
I know we do.
So you know, we get it. Chris sends it out to us, right?
It's already, that's what I'm trying to say.
So at the end of the year, you actually have that. You have the numbers, okay? And what I'm saying is, I think these kinds of things would be, would be good for the public, rather than just seeing tentative budget, you know, for this last year and this year
Yeah, I, I get you. I hear you.
To be able to provide that kind of information.
Okay.
But I think you do the first step, which is important, which is collecting all the information. And now, it's a question of disseminating that in a, in one package. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Thank you. Anybody else, and this is just on the preliminary budget, any questions? Okay, I'm going to ask the board to close the public hearing on the preliminary budget for 2025. I need a motion.
I make, I make the motion to close the preliminary meeting for the budget, the preliminary budget of 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to move into the first meeting of the month for the town board, October 15. I need to make, amend the agenda on the regular meeting to add resolution number 81. This was a late addition, to add, appoint a part-time police officer. So I need to add this resolution 81 to appoint a part-time police officer.
I'll make the motion to amend the agenda to add resolution 81.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. So I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I make the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the September 23, 2024 town board meeting, and motion to re-approve minutes from the August 26, 2024 town board meeting, to include filed legal notices, affidavit, publication notice of adoption, certificate, of posting, the legal notice of spol, affidavit, and publication of the DPW garage renovations. I need a motion.
I'll make those motions.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so move. I need authorization to payment of bills of $735,678.62.
I make, I make the motion to authorize the payment of bill of $735,678.62.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody have a comment on the agenda, specifically just on the agenda itself? No? Okay. Reports of departments, of boards, everybody had a chance to go through all the departments. Does anybody on the board have any questions about our reports? If there's no other questions, or there aren't any questions, we're going to move on. We're going to accept the reports as submitted. And presentations, we do not have any presentations tonight. Old business, does anybody have any old business you want to discuss? Anybody got any new business you want to discuss?
Yes.
I know we wanted to discuss your
Yes. I, from the last time we had a meeting, I introduced the Town of Marlborough Person of the Year Award. I put a draft together that a Person of the Year is awarded, award in a newly implemented award given by the town board for our, any outstanding person residing in our community. Those interested in nominating the resident for the award should submit a 500-word essay describing the individual who amplifies the following characteristic, characteristics. They make a positive impact on the community, and they demonstrate good character and the willingness to help others in the community. Nominees need to be a resident of Marlborough for at least 10 years, at least 18 years of age, and elected officials currently in office in the Town of Marlborough is not eligible for nomination. The Marlborough Town Board will review all nominee essays and will select a candidate based on the town's spirit of volunteerism and community service. The winning candidate will be presented as the Person of the Year. Plaque and their name, and the names of future, of all future winners will be displayed on the plaque in the boardroom. And I want to propose this draft.
I think it's great. 500 words.
Minimum.
Minimum? No, I think it's awesome, Manny. I think, I think the outline is great.
I got, I tell you, I was telling that to a few people, and I had gotten such really good response that
Yes, it's awesome.
They're, they're ready to put nominees in, and, and I feel that, that it'll be a good thing. Then we have a nice plaque back here, a master plaque, like with 50 blankets, and for next 50 years, we'll see who is going to be
Yeah.
You know, the Person of the Year Award for any outstanding person
The plaque will probably outlive me, but
Oh, it'll live everybody, but, but future generations will see
That's good.
That's the point, yes.
Who they are.
That's the point. It's got to be there. Does the other board members have any other input or discussion on this that you want to add or comment on, or?
I would just suggest, Manny, instead of calling it the Person of the Year, I'm wondering if we could just call it the Resident of the Year. But other than that, I think it's awesome, and a really good program. Highly supportive.
Dave?
I think it's great.
Okay.
Did a good job.
And when the, the only thing is here, Manny, did you say here when we would actually give this award?
I, I, I think that we should, we got to give people at least, you know, 30 days to, I would think that by the end of the year, and if we
Yeah.
Publicize it and, and get it out.
Yep.
And by the end of the year.
So the last meeting of the year, which would be the first meeting in December, probably, more than likely. So you got, yeah, we got time, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. If the board is okay with this, I will get this to my in-house person who does all this stuff, Mrs. Danielle, who, as we all know, goes over everything, and she gets it on our website, and she put, we get it on our Facebook page, and we'll get it out to the public. I'll ask, I see the co-chair, rec committee chairperson is here tonight. We'll ask to put it on the recreational page to get it out there, if possible. So we'll get it out there into the public. I mean, social media is the best place. We'll ask the PBA to put it on their social media page, and we'll put a date that they, you have it in here, the date that they have to return, and the date that we're going to do it.
I will give everybody at least 30 days.
Yep.
I will make it like, you know, you know, by day, by December 1st, something like that, or
Well, I'm going to look at when our last meeting will be, and then I'll go back
Yeah.
Couple of weeks from there. So it gives us time to review all the applicants, and then we'll discuss it, and then we'll come up with a person. That way, in the meantime, I'll, I'll look into the cost of ordering the plaque, and also a plaque for the person to take themselves. So there'll be a plaque that we originally put on the wall now, and there'll be a plaque that we will give them that they receive. So, all right, I just need a motion to move forward this, that we're going to move forward with, I don't know if we're going to say the Person of the Year or the Resident of the Year, but we'll, we'll come up with that, and I'll move forward with it. Are we good with that?
Yes, I'll make the motion to move forward with the
Your second.
Person Resident of the Year program.
We could do person slash resident. I don't know what you want to do. But, okay, all in favor? Aye, so move. Good job, Manny. Very nice. Very good. Okay. Do I have any new business? I don't think so. Only thing I will tell everybody is that we had a very nice groundbreaking ceremony today at the highway department building. Jerry was getting his best buy order, and he couldn't make it, so the only one that wasn't there, no, I would say that you weren't there, chief, but, but it was a nice ceremony. We are starting to do the foundation work, and it's coming along. I think we got a good plan in place. Did get word back from Central Hudson today that we're going to start moving that along, so that'll help us move this along quicker. Again, I just want to commend the board on all their support that they've been giving, myself personally, but all our employees, by backing these projects and doing the things that I think are moving the town forward in a positive way. So I just wanted to bring that up, that we are moving forward on that. So I do want to ask, though, I know since you're here, Arlette, do you want to bring up the, any of the, you know, talk about the trunk-or-treat quick, and the parade that the chief just found out about today that didn't know about it?
I have a question.
So this way, I'll put you right on the spot.
So the Town of Marlborough Recreation Committee trunk-or-treat event is in the park on Saturday, October 26, from 3:30 to 5:30 p.m. We currently have 43 trunks registered out of 50 slots. We are partnering with the Marlborough Police Department. They're going to be offering a children's activity under the pavilion, as well as hot dogs and drinks, and then in addition to that, we're looking for a photographer to take photos of the children, because we have this beautiful backdrop, very scary, made by one of the committee members.
Oh, yeah, she drew one, didn't she?
We did do a call-out on social media for candy. It looks like you have 20 bags of candy in your office. I just counted. People have made monetary donations in the amount of $95 to date for us to purchase candy with that, and they're also sending, we created an Amazon wishlist, so they're also sending through that as well. So a lot of support from the community. Hopefully, we'll have beautiful weather, and we'll get a wonderful turnout. So again, that date is Saturday, October 26, from 3:30 to 5:30 in the Cluett Shants Memorial Park. The next event, which is new, and chief, maybe I can get some approval here, we are going to do, instead of doing the tree lighting in the Town of Milton, just because last year was very difficult, we do that event on a Sunday when we have not cooperative weather, we don't have a rain date. The businesses don't want to move that to a Saturday because it prohibits them from having customers park on Main Street in Milton. So it became a little bit of a challenge last year after having a washout of an event. I thought it could be an interesting concept to do a Christmas parade. Some other communities in the local area do a Christmas parade where they have townspeople turnout, the fire trucks, the police department, you know, any type of vehicle is welcomed, and they decorate their vehicles, and they do a lit-up parade through the town. So I thought we could do the tree lighting in our beautiful park, and move that daytime event to the park. And we're looking at Saturday, December 7, with a rain date of Sunday, December 8. The event would take place in the park at 3:00 p.m. with children's activities, some food trucks, some caroling, same event that happens in the Town of Milton, but it's off of the street. We don't have to close down Main Street Milton. It's safe for our children. And then we were going to do a Christmas parade that kicked off at 5:30, starting on North Road in Milton, to follow the same route as the Memorial Day Parade, if it were to take place in Milton. We have met with the highway superintendent, and they will assist us. They also assisted in the Memorial Day Parade this, this previous year. So if we can get approval from the town board and the police chief, we'll have our salsa. No, the tree lighting will, so the daytime event where there's crafts for the kids and activities, and the food trucks will start at 3:00. The parade is kind of a separate event that's going to end at the town park, and then we'll light the tree at the park. So the parade will kick off at 5:30. We think it'll take, you know, 45 minutes to get to the park, and then the tree lighting would be around, let's say, 6:30, with some more by the bonfire.
The bonfire thing, I'm not sure about yet. I'd have to confer what you want. I just want to make sure. I mean, I love it. I love the guy, just so you know, today, too, you got, you got the highway guys all excited, because they like, they're ready talking about building this platform.
Bonfire.
Well, the bonfire is one thing, that's
No, they want to put the tree in the center of the pond.
They want to put the tree in the middle of the pond, and light the tree in the middle of the pond. No, I know. They got, they already got it all set up, because they want where the, where the water fountain is.
The front pond or the back pond?
Front pond.
Okay, makes sense.
They want to replace the water fountain, because we have electricity, obviously. They can go all the way out to the middle of the pond. We're going to take that out, and they're going to replace it with a floating pier of some kind, and have the tree on there and light it up there.
I'm stressed by this, but I love it.
So I said, look, if you guys could pull this off and get it so it doesn't tip over, and it doesn't do all these things, go for it.
I can't keep a tree upright in my yard. They're going to keep one upright in the pond. I'm impressed.
So where is this bonfire going to be going? That's, I guess, where I would, I'm only concerned about.
Um, wherever you allow it to go.
Probably where they burn the flags.
In the, over in that, the wet area on the, in the side? Yeah, I mean, that would probably be the best area.
Yes.
Yep. Okay.
And we, we have an ask-out to the Milton Fire Department, and of course, we'll extend it to Marlborough as well. But Milton always partnered with us on the event and brought, you know, a special guest.
As long as we have like a fire truck there of some kind, I would hope they'll be there. So that's fine. So we need a motion that the rec committee can move forward with this Christmas parade from
I'll make the motion
All the way to the park.
I'll make the motion for the rec committee to make a parade through the park.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. All right, thanks. Hey, I love, I love it, because we're doing different things, right? You know, it's cool. And John was showing me like all kinds of videos today about the parade, how they do it in other towns, so it looked pretty cool. So I think it's going to be great. It's just, if I'm going to be in this parade, I have to be inside a truck somewhere, because I do not like the cold weather.
Roger that.
I'm going to be driving, all right? You can take a picture of me driving. How's that? No. All right, thank you. Very good. All right. So I'm going to get on to correspondence. Like, this got two, I believe. One's from Mary Beth King. She says that she regrets not able to attend tonight's town board meeting due to previous commitment. However, like, to remind all the town board members and all the townspeople that everyone is invited to the Sarah Hall Library, Free Library Celebration is coming Sunday from 2:00 to 4:00 o'clock. And, eventually had to edit it here. Michelle Henchy, our senator, will be there at 2:00 p.m. with a special announcement. Also attending will be Jonathan Jacobson, State Assemblyman, Nicole Clark, Senator Scoofus, Director of Operations, for the funding they provided the library. Following a brief break, we will be honoring Lucy Graner, Graner, I can't even see this, Dave Pulliam, Michael Charter, Gail Appeler, MJ and Son Mechanical, and those who purchased a brick every one instrumental in making the renovation a success. We will then formally introduce our new library director, Raven Fonfa. The event will conclude with the presentation of an annual Pat Russo Award. This year, recipients are Rosemary Wine and Sue Trapani. Light refreshments and other orders will be provided. We'll make sure that there's enough for everyone. So please head down into the train station to check out the Marco Show, which is at 5:00 p.m. on the same day. So a lot of stuff going on at the library this weekend, and then also Marco, which is our art exhibits, is going to be down at the train station this weekend. So Mary Beth just wanted to remind us of that. So thank you. And then I got this one today, to the town board of Town of Marlborough, the same thing. So someone, Raven was giving me the same, and she's our new library director in Milton, Raven Fonfa. So I don't have to read that one, because it's the same information. So what's that one? Keep this one. I'll get, you got that one, too? I'll get you. Okay. All right, this time of the meeting, does anybody have a public comment on anything? Public comment? Got three minutes to have a public comment. Anybody out there have a public comment? Gail, no public comment? Okay. Then we're going to get right into resolutions. I haven't even, even moved in this. You guys didn't say anything. So Resolution 75, to adopt the Town of Marlborough mitigation plan that was tabled from the 9/23 meeting. Everybody got the new updated
Yes, thank you.
And proper mitigation plan, not the, what was it, 300-page mitigation? So, sorry about that, but good call there. So Supervisor Corcoran proposes the file, where's the Town of Marlborough Town Board recognize the threat and natural hazards posed to people and property within the Town of Marlborough, and where's the town board has prepared a multi-hazard mitigation plan hereby known as the Ulster County NY 2024 Hazard Mitigation Plan, in accordance with the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, and where's the Ulster County, New York 2024 Hazard Mitigation Plan identifies mitigation goals and actions to reduce the eliminate and long-term risk on people and property in the Town of Marlborough from the impacts of future hazards and disasters, and where's adopting by the, where's adoption by the Town of Marlborough Town Board demonstrates their commitment to hazard mitigation and achieving the goal outlined in Ulster County, New York 2024 mitigation plan. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Town of Marlborough, New York, that Section 1, in accordance with the Town Code of Town Marlborough, Town Boards adopt the Ulster County, New York 2024 Hazard Mitigation Plan. The plan approved by the community may be edited and amended after submission for review, but will not require the community to re-adopt any further interactions, iterations, I'm sorry. It only applies to the specific plan and does not absolve the community from adapting the plan in five years, and moves for its adoption.
Yes, and thank you. Yes, and thank you to Gail for all of the work on this.
Yes.
Councilman Cowkin.
Yes.
Councilman Zandio.
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran.
Yes.
Scott, I got one comment. Mickey, our last CAC meeting, will this help out, what you were saying about we could get points, having a personalized hazard, hazard mitigation plan for the town? You said we could do that. Will this help that cause?
I have, it should. I have to address the entire mitigation plan, and I don't know if the environmental issues that they need to have addressed in such a plan are included. I do know that one of our members has been working for help for extension on that, and we're not going to be making next Thursday about it. So, but yes, if, if those things are added in, yes, CAC could get points for that, and I'm very grateful that we can amend it as intended without having to go through a resolution as you just wrote on this bit.
Okay. Good? Good? All right. Resolution 78, prepare and submit the application for the purpose of securing of grant monies for the town court. This is the JCAP grant that we do every year for the court. The courts are allowed to apply for this grant yearly. Pretty much, we're almost 99.9% positive we get these grants, but you have to submit them every year, and we have to do a resolution in order to do this. So Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following. Whereas the Town of Marlborough desires to submit a Justice Court Assistance Program Grant Application, and where said application will be for the funding of carpets and file cabinets, and whereas the JCAP grant application must be signed by both the town justice and the town supervisor. Now therefore, it be resolved the town board of Town of Marlborough authorizes the Marlborough Town Court to apply for the JCAP grant. Be it further resolved that the town board of the Town of Marlborough authorize the town supervisor to sign the JCAP grant application, and moves for its adoption.
Councilwoman Sessa.
Yes.
Councilman Cowkin.
Yes.
Councilman Zandio. Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran.
Yes, thank you. All right, so we're finally going to be putting out the Marlborough Stewart Plant for its upgrade. So this is what this resolution is about. Resolution 79, authorize public bidding for contract TM-241, additions and alterations to the Hamlet Marlborough Waste Water Treatment Facility. Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following. Whereas the plans and specifications have been completed for contract TM-241, additions and alterations to the Hamlet Marlborough Waste Water Treatment Facility, and whereas the plans and specifications have been prepared by Brener and Larros, PC Professional Engineers, and whereas the project must be publicly bid, I got to put this up here. Whereas the project must be publicly bid this fall and awarded prior to the end of the year due to the ARPA grant deadlines. Now therefore, it be resolved by the town board that the following contract be authorized for public bidding by the town. One, contract TM-241, addition and alterations to the Hamlet Marlborough Waste Water Treatment Facility. Be it further resolved, the supervisor be allowed to set the bid date in consultation with the project engineer, and moves for its adoption.
Councilwoman Sessa.
Yes.
Councilman Cowkin.
Yes.
Councilman Zandio.
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran.
Yes, thank you. All right. Resolution 80, I'm not sure we should do this one. Supervisor Corcoran is proposing the following. This is to authorize the supervisor to sign the employment agreement with the chief of police. As you know, we did finalize the agreement with the PBA, and so now, after that, we moved on to negotiating with the chief, who was very, very tough to negotiate with, but we got a deal done. So this is a five-year extension of his contract, and before we vote, and I know I speak for the board on this, Jerry, we cannot be more pleased with what you do for us, what you do for the PBA, and not just in the police department. I could also speak for a lot of people in the town hall. You go above and beyond your job and your call of duty every day you come into work. I know you love it, so that's why you want to keep coming here, but I truly thank you for everything you do for me, and for this board, and for this town, so I'm happy to do this. So be it resolved that the town board of the Town of Marlborough authorize the town supervisor to sign the employment agreement with the chief of police, and moves for its adoption.
Councilwoman Sessa.
Absolutely, yes.
Councilman Cowkin.
Yes.
Councilman Zandio.
Yes.
Yes. See, I had to hold that speech back after we did negotiation. And then we have Resolution 81, to appoint a part-time police officer. Come on. You know, this is the one we had. Okay, so Supervisor Corcoran proposes the following. Whereas the police committee has interviewed for the position of part-time police officer, and whereas the recommendation of police committee as well, chief of police, to appoint Kelly Aluziano?
Aluziano.
Aluziano? How do you say that, Jerry? Come on, you guys got to prep me on these words. You know these, like my last names, I'm not good at. Be it resolved that Kelly Aluziano be appointed to part-time police officer effective October 15th, 2024. From all, everything I've heard is, it's going to be a good fit for all of us, so Scott experienced, which is great.
Kelly, Kelly, she works for the village official and the town official. She's certified SRO. She has 11 years of experience, 10 years of experience.
Yeah.
So I look forward to her coming here.
So she's going to basically take Sergeant Pascal's position at the school as the SRO, as Sergeant Pascal is now retired and is running for Justice Court. He cannot be a police officer anymore. So she's a perfect fit, since she actually has this experience, and she has years of experience and knowledge, so I think she's going to be a great fit, so.
That's fantastic.
So, and moves for its adoption.
Councilwoman Sessa.
Yes.
Councilman Cowkin.
Yes.
Councilman Zandio.
Yes.
Supervisor Corcoran.
Yes. And Manny, we are on number 14.
Okay, it's, time is 7:42. I make a motion to adjourn.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.